Today is June 11th, 2018. This is a regular meeting of the Hastings Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our April 23rd, 2018 meeting. Commissioners, do you have any additions or corrections to the minutes in your packet?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, I probably thought about it in my mind. The fact that I wasn't here, I couldn't have seconded the motions.
Okay.
To approve the minutes from the prior meeting.
All right, I'll make that correction.
I'm sure I thought about it.
All right. Thank you Commissioner Alpa. Anything else? I don't know. Have to watch the video footage.
Yeah.
Check that out. All right, entertain a motion for approval then.
We move to approve the minutes.
All right, have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And the minutes are approved. All right. You... All right, item number two on the agenda is includes a public hearing. This is City Code Amendment 2018-13 having to do with the fence height ordinance. Mr. Hensman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. We have before us an ordinance amendment and public hearing to consider a change to the city code, which we've had in practice for some time. And that is the establishment of a minimum or a maximum height for fences within the front yard. That height is three and a half feet or 42 inches. Within our code or within the permit process that we have right now, the application, the handout, we've stipulated a maximum height of 42 inches for probably at least the last 16 years. Upon further review of the code, we found that that provision is not officially within the city code. So we thought it would be time to put it there. And so the practice of what we're doing after the code is adopted as to what we're doing today would be unchanged, other than we would have backing of the code for the change itself. We did take a review of the fence code to see if there was any other changes, and this is the only change that we're making here. The rationale behind having a lower fence height within the front yard is it opens up visibility, leads to less of a wall effect that you would have, provides for confinement in some demarcation of the property lines. So that is the amendment that we have before you tonight. Again, this is a public hearing if you want to open it at this time, or I could stand for any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. We will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to make a comment on this particular item? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing. Commissioners, questions and comments about this particular action?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alpa.
Mr. Hensman, is there a distance from the street that it's got to be maintained, you know, a distance away from the road?
Sure. Commissioner, there's no minimum setback from the road right-of-way itself. Typically, between the curb and the property line, there's going to be about 10 to 15 feet of boulevard area. So practically, from when you see the curb to where the property line begins, the fence would be about 10 to 15 feet back.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
So it's got to be about 10 to 15 feet from there, okay. Thank you. So effectively, it's on the right-of-way?
Effectively, it would be within the private property itself, outside of the right-of-way.
Outside of the right-of-way, so it can be on the line, it gets to be on the property?
Right. There's no setback from the property line, presumably it could be right on the property line. There are some provisions that we have under our fence policy for major easements. If there is a major utility running through or a major drainage easement, there's restrictions on fence placement there.
John, I didn't look through the whole ordinance, but was, is there a definition of what front is somewhere in the other language?
There is.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody feeling like a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment 2018-23 affecting fence height.
All right. Commissioner Alpa, motions for approval. I have a second.
Second, and please.
Commissioner Bars. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
And this will move forward to June 18th City Council, where they'll order another public hearing, have the first reading, and then have the final action on this on July 9th.
All right, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, Resurrection United Methodist Church Site Plan 2018-22: Expansion of a Parking Lot. Mr. Fortney.
Thank you very much. This site plan is encompassed this block south of 15th Street West, east of Pioneer Park. The area outlined in red is all owned by the church. It includes the church building, parking lot, and four houses that they own. This is the first phase in what might be a multiple-phase plan for the church property. This will be expanding the parking lot, about 20 spaces after the removal of a house. It'll also include the installation of a drainage pond and include some additional landscaping. It'll also include a 624 square foot storage garage that you can kind of see in the middle of the site. Future expansion that may happen in the future would be building expansions as shown on the map with those blue rectangles in different areas. It would also include additional parking on the south side of the lot block. This is the site plan. Turn sideways, so it can be a little bit larger. Again, it increases the parking by about 20 lots after removing that house. And the garage you can see in the location shown in red. It will be between, if you're familiar with the site, there's a couple of garages there now from the homes. There's one off of Walnut Street, and there's one off of Maple Street, which will be removed. And this will be in between those two. This is a photograph taken from Maple Street. That white house there would be removed, and the parking lot would be expanded generally in that area. None of the existing site access drives will be impacted by this proposal. And the parking lot will go along Maple Street here. This is the elevation drawings of the storage garage and trash enclosure. It's a typical storage garage you'd see in a residential area with lap siding and a garage door, a service door. This is the landscaping plan. It includes a berm between the parking lot and Maple Street. A 10-foot wide landscape strip is required between parking lot and street. It'll also have dense shrubs planted, as you can see, along with at least the requirement of having 16 trees and 13 shrubs, which is based on lot perimeter of the area impacted and the additional impervious surface. And our tree preservation policy does require some tree plantings for impacted trees that are removed for the development. Fence is also required between the parking lot and the residential property to the south. Six-foot wide privacy fence is proposed at the back end of that parking lot to provide screening there. And staff is recommending approval with the conditions noted in the staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to stand for them. Also, the project architect is here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners.
I have a question.
Yes.
How tall is that fence that goes up next to the residential?
Six feet tall.
Six. And then what kind of material is that made of?
It's a six-foot high solid wood fence. Yeah, I just have the photographs from Maple. Probably, yeah, is there a similar fence along Walnut Street, you're saying?
Between, if you go back one more slide, yeah, on the south side and the residence on the east side of Walnut, you saw the church, and that's the center church. There's a staggered vertical board that would affect, and the bottom was kind of carried that character for.
Can I ask another question? The, so two houses will remain.
Three, actually.
Okay, so the third one is the Walnut, right on the east side.
The corner, the southwest corner, on Maple and the two on Walnut, remain.
Two on Walnut, okay, yep, all right.
If you could go to the garage plan, the traction closure kind of gives that indication of what that type of fence is at this point. It's kind of very simple, very straightforward. But I know probably some of the orders requires.
So Justin, it looks like the parking lot, I'm guessing that this property line for this one lot actually extends straight back from the other property line? So are we actually encroaching on that existing houses lot?
That's correct.
Is there anything, are they re-drawing those lines, or what's the procedure with that?
There's an administrative procedure to adjust property lines. So they could be, those property lines could be adjusted in the case where the parking lot extends over that property line, or where the garage extends over a property line, if it does on the south.
Are you going to, are they going to do that, or does it even matter since the same owner owns all of these properties?
Well, the concern would be if they wanted to sell the properties, if they didn't go through with the rest of their stages of site development. So we'd probably like to have that demarcation taking place now.
And the lot that's created there on that corner then is still a viable lot? It's not smaller than what we like to see, or anything like that?
Yeah, it probably would be large enough, but we would check into that.
It probably would be viable, you mean?
Yeah. We, well, we'd have to check the lot size after that was done, but just looking at the aerial picture, it looks like it could be large enough.
Yeah, but graphically, along the slide that's up on the screen, you look along the properties east of Walnut, they're in a similar period, they have similar flat width as what's being imposed, or could be imposed.
Yeah.
I have another question. Can you help me kind of understand or summarize the stormwater management bio-retention landscape area? Is it something to do with the coverage of the land and having to have runoffs prior to stormwaters?
Yeah, they're going to have to treat the stormwater to a level that's at least as good as it is currently. So they'll have to, they can't have any more runoff, and the water quality can't be any less than it is now.
Water quality that goes into the sewer?
Correct.
Can I, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Steve Cross.
Could I have you step up and just state your name? I got a question for you.
Certainly.
So do you, is there a long-term vision or plan that you guys already have for these, this whole area?
There is a plan that schematically the church has been pursuing or been trying to get their arms around it in a very general sense, only to the degree that it led us to this particular design of Phase One. And so it's all that we have for you tonight, as far as any kind of details or specifics. But should there be need and growth of the church experience, there are additional plans that they would like to see done, which would then take out the remaining three homes, add on to the church, expand the parking further south, and then to the east along 16th.
Question, just to kind of get a feel for the reality of that stormwater management. Well, like after a hard rain, there will be standing water?
This design covers a 100-year rain event, okay? As far as the amount of water anticipated for a 100-year event, for all of the drainage patterns coming off the building along the south, there are a number of scuppers and downspouts taking care of current building runoff that are going to be piped under slab, underground to storm. That is going to be part of how this is handled, not so much surface water like it is today. So it'd be piped underneath because this lot is very level, very flat, and it's running into some difficulties of getting rid of the water, getting it away from entrances, ice in the wintertime, things of that nature. So trying to do that, but then the rest of the hard surface areas are being channeled to that new storm pond that, again, will hold water per code and as well as the treatment of the water quality, again, in accordance with what the code requires. There, that green strip that connects to Walnut is then an overflow or as that water level rises to that point, that outlet point, would then flow into the city storm. But again, that's at a point that holds that water required for the amount of hard surface area of the improved lot, of the improved entire property, before it would then overflow into any kind of storm of the cities.
So that's an underground route out?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner.
So what, who watches that quality of the runoff, what gets discharged? Is that, I'm sorry, did I, I think I heard something to the effect that it's, that that is paid attention to before? It's probably, is it adequate design that it filters it enough to go into the?
That's my, Commissioner, that's my understanding, that the basic installed design of that biopond retention filtration type of element as installed, and certainly there'll be some requirements for maintenance, depending on what kind of runoff, what kind of snow storage they have in the wintertime. Trying to discourage a bunch of plowing to that side, because then you pick up all the junk from roads and whatever, and then that ends up, now it would just be additional maintenance for them to take care of. But if installed properly, it is designed to give a long life worth of performance with respect to the water that is going to be engaged.
So it almost sounds like the plan is to remove snow to, like, remove versus pile up?
I'm not exactly certain what their goals are. There are some places that could be used for storage. Currently, because their site is so restrictive, they end up having to load and truck it off-site.
Curious, those storm systems here, do they go directly to the river? I mean, is it a direct route to the river?
Commissioner, eventually they do go through the river, to the river, albeit they go through the treatment facility on-site here. They go through other holding ponds within the city itself through the main stormwater system, but ultimately they go into the Mississippi River. So the point of having the bio-retention pond here and the stormwater requirements, they take a look at one, rate control, making sure that there's not going to be a flooding situation. And two, they're looking at water quality. So we have civil engineers that are hired by the owner of the property, and then our city engineer here that will review the plans to make sure that the rate and volume control are adequate to cover on the site, and they will also take a look at how the site is designed from a bio-retention standpoint.
Because I know not real far from here, there's like markings in the, at the entrances of the stormwater drain that, you know, indicating which, it appeared to be which ones go directly to the river without treatment. And they're not real far from here, but I don't know where that is, you know?
Yeah.
Justin, that stormwater pipe that cuts across that other lot there, is that typically how we would handle something like that? Or is that made possible because they own that property? If they didn't own that property, would we be able to do that?
No, not, well, not if, unless there was an easement there. And there probably, there probably isn't one.
So is that a, is that a concern for future management of this property? I mean, if they would decide to sell that corner lot, does that create a, does that create an easement?
No, I mean, they'd have to go through and have an easement drafted up. They own both the properties, so that would be easy to do. But yeah, if they were going to sell that property, they should want to make sure they have a rights to have their utilities on it.
But from a city perspective, we're okay with that?
Well, they own both of the properties, so, you know, they are able to make improvements.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think from a standpoint of it being a private system, we wouldn't have a requirement on there that there would be an easement within the property itself. It certainly would be incumbent upon the owners of the property that if they were to transfer it, that they would have to make those provisions to ensure ownership and access rights of that utility in there. But since it's a private facility in there, I don't think we have concerns about that. If it was a public facility, we would.
Good question. So the, does that create an easement for the corner of 16th and Walnut? With the flow of the drain going to Walnut? That's private owned.
Are you asking if that access way from the stormwater pond, Commissioner, going to Walnut is private? Yes, that is.
So that created, that creates a new easement for that homeowner?
No. What it would, what it does is the utility crosses that property. It's privately owned, privately maintained. And so we, as the city, would not have an interest in establishing an easement over it since it's a private system. If it was, if the situation were to change at some point where the church would be looking to sell those lots, that would be the time to establish an easement. But it would really be for the benefit of the church and for the future owners of that property. We don't really have an interest in it.
Okay, I guess then maybe, then, okay, so is 16th and Walnut, is that owned by the church?
Yes, all the, the entire block here is owned by the church, yes.
Okay, thank you, catches me up, all right. Gotcha.
Any other questions? I didn't see a lighting plan, but I assume we'll cover that.
One thing submitted and staff reviewed it, and it shows that there's less lighting impact than is allowed by code.
Okay.
I can just, also just show you the, you have it on here? There's this little yellow dot, I don't know if you can see it on there, but it's an additional light fixture for the parking lot. So that's.
Oh, between the, the yellow dot there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Anybody in the mood to make a motion?
I guess I would move to approve the site plan review 2018-22. Based on the recommended actions stated by the city here.
All right, Commissioner Johnson moves for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Alpa, seconds. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
And then this will move forward to the City Council coming up on June 18th for final approval.
All right, thank you. Okay, the last item. Oh, no, 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 I'm getting ahead of myself. Item number five on the agenda is City Code Amendment 2018-19: Special Use Permits. Mr. Hensman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a revisit of an item that we had on April 23rd. We held the public hearing that night, and no one spoke for or against the item at that time. But there was some concerns raised by the Planning Commission on the code. So I'm going to start by reviewing a little bit of the rationale and some of the code changes, and then some of the discussion that we had back on April 23rd. What we're asking to do is to add a provision to the city code related to special use permit expirations. It's commonly called the sunset clause. Right now, we do not have anything specifically within the code that says that special use permits will expire after a certain amount of time. And we've had that as a boilerplate condition on various actions over the last 16 years, but thought it best to put it into the code itself. And so within the ordinance amendment that we're proposing, we're putting in there that there's a limitation placed upon the special use permit that if it is discontinued for a period of three years or longer, it shall be known void. Now, three years is a change from what we had discussed at the last meeting. At the last meeting, I had a one-year provision in there. Upon further reflection and discussion, the point of the special use permit recording is not necessarily to be punitive, but to recognize situations in which there's non-use. And one-year time period was thought to be a little bit too short. So three years is being proposed for that. We also added some language in there that if it's discontinued due to the success of operation of a different use upon the property, the permit shall be known void. What that means is that, for example, you have an auto garage at its location. It ceases operation, flower shop opens up. Once that new use comes in, that voids out the special use permit for the former use on it. It doesn't, it means they can come back and they can ask for a new special use permit on the property, but doesn't grandfather father in those rights from before. It goes back to the purpose behind this, in, in my opinion, and that is, we wanna be able to make sure that these permits that are issued, the uses are recognizable by the public. If you have an empty garage over there, maybe it's been empty for a year or two, you can see it's a repair garage, and that's something that may be coming forward in the future. If it's a situation where it was a repair garage, now a flower shop that's closed, but at some point in the past it had been a garage, that might not be very visible to a property owner within there. And so that, those are the changes that we have moving forward on there. One of the other things that we're asking to do is to record these special use permits with the county itself. These would be recorded on the property record. The purpose behind that is to memorialize these better. Right now, it's, it's not exactly clear, clear to the property owner what uses are on the property if there's a chain of ownership over time. And so we wanna make sure that that is more visible within the chain of ownership on a property, the, the rights that are allowed via a special use permit itself. So at the last meeting, we discussed a couple of things here. One of them was to the effect of the proposed change on existing permits. We had a, a discussion on whether existing permits that have been issued could be brought under the code changes, so that permits that were issued with no sunset clause provision, no expiration provision, that the change in the code may affect those. We did do some, have some discussion with the city attorney on that one. It's not exactly clear if we have the power to do that. He appeared hesitant to wanna go in that direction on permits that were issued in the past. So that, that could potentially trigger a legal challenge. I guess to sum it up, it's a gray area. We're not, we don't really have a lot of, of, of previous experience or case law to make determinations of what may occur in that situation. So a key question, I think, for the commission is it, is it, is, is it the intent to place limits on existing permits for the adoption of this amendment? If it's not the intent, we can make that more clear. If it is the intent, we would be traveling into some waters that may be a little bit more murky on that one. And then we talked a little bit about the rationale for recording permits on there. I think I, I went through that a little bit earlier. And then we talked about issuing permits directly to the operator instead of the owner of the property. I did have another discussion with the city attorney on this one. The, the use permits themselves do travel with the property. I don't think that we can issue those directly to an owner of a property. The owner of a business or operator of a business, they have to be issued to the property and travel with the property themselves. So that's a summary of some of the discussion and some of the changes we've had since the last meeting, and I can stand for any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bars.
John, one clarification. So when a special use permit is discontinued due to the success of operation of a different use, is it still, is the three-year window, does that still apply? So that, you know, the flower, I mean, is it needed after the flower shop? Even if they were only open for six months and then they, you know, business wasn't successful, it's already gone?
That, that's correct. The intent of that would be that if you have a change in ownership, that that would void out that three-year provision. So what, this would, this would invalidate the permit prior to that three years.
I have a follow-up question on that. Is, when you say different use upon the property, do we mean a different use authorized by special use permit?
Uh, I, I think the intent of that, from my standpoint, would be any change in the use itself, whether that would be permitted or special. My rationale behind that is, is once you have a, a change in use of the property, it becomes less apparent to the neighbors or other people that, of what may come in that property.
That feels sticky. I mean, as soon as you stop operating what it was you were operating under special use permit, do you not, by default, start operating in some other mode?
Commissioner, if, if there's a different use that comes in there, I'm not sure if that, if that provides more clarity or not, but it wouldn't be the cessation of the use itself. I mean, if the use was to stop for a period of time, it would still be under that three-year clock. But if that use was to change to an entirely different use, that's where the, where the voiding of the permit would come in.
Mr. Chair, again?
Yeah.
Just to elaborate on this further, John. So property has a special use permit. They cease to exist, new buyer comes in. They operate a use that's approved, is not required, you know, a different special use permit.
Right.
So that still would not allow it to stay within it for three years?
Well, let me offer this as an, an example here. The, the repair garage on Highway fifty-five and Vermillion Street that's been inoperable for the last couple of years there. If, under this provision here, if that was to come, if someone was to come forward to reopen the garage, that would be fine, provided it was within that three-year period. If someone had come forward to change that to an entirely different use, use the flower shop example again, then that would void the special use permit on the property.
But that wouldn't hold, I thought it only holds true to new special use permits that would be put in place.
You are correct on that one, yes, that.
Still carry?
Right, yeah. Assuming that was a new special use permit that we issued.
Okay.
For example.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stephen Malory.
I would, um, would, would the existing special use permits be, be, um, recorded?
The existing ones that we have, I don't think that we would do that. I think that would be from this point forward.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alpa.
Do, uh, do special use permits have to be renewed at any point? Or are they just, as long as you're in business, they're, they're good?
Correct. They're, once a special use permit is issued, then it is issued indefinitely. That's what the, what the code says today. The provisions that we have here would place limits on it if it's not in operation. But if, as long as it's continuing in operation, at the same use, same intensity, it would, it could operate indefinitely. There's no timeframe given on that.
Okay.
So I wanna go back and explore what Commissioner Bars was talking about a little bit there, because it doesn't seem to me like the, the success. I, I get the example where you said somebody else comes in and operates it with a different use, right? That seems a little more clear-cut, cuz you've got a new owner with a new use. But if it's the same owner that decides to shutter the garage, try the flower shop thing, and then decides that it's not working, and he wants to go back to the garage?
Commissioner, the owners, whether it's a new owner, old owner, to me, that would not factor into it. It would just be the change in the use. That once a use on a property change, if a special use permit is issued on a property, and that use changes into something different, regardless of the ownership, the intent of this would be that that permit would be void. Doesn't preclude them from coming back forward in the future to get a new permit, but it would void out the, the existing one.
And, and I guess I, I don't know how that works, you know, operationally in, in the real world, but it seems like it's really hard to keep track of that. Right? Because they're not having to come necessarily to get a, a new special use permit to do the flower shop. Let's imagine flower shops are.
Yeah.
Okay by zoning code. So how would we know? Would we only deal with that if, like, a neighbor complains and says he's, he's opening up his garage again, and he shouldn't be able to because he had a flower shop in there for a month?
Typically, what happens with new business operations opening up is they'll, they'll come forward for a, a building permit for renovation or whatnot within the building. There's also a, a business, what is this, license, but we do a business, yeah, change of occupancy, change of occupancy permit. So that, that triggers the need for us to look at that. So that would be the time for us to say, yeah, this is permitted, or no, there would be something else needed in it.
And that's where it comes back to that it's assigned to the property and not the owner. So irregardless of whether it's a new owner or an existing owner, it's still based on that property. And if that, uh, special use changes, it requires a new permit, or the old one is void.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bars.
John, can you give us a background again as far as the impetus behind this? Because I guess, from my perspective, it feels like it's really tied to older properties, like the example of an auto, you know, usage that, you know, now that we've developed around it, doesn't fit the neighborhood now, but based on, you know, legal concerns, we can't really impact historic properties anyway. So now it's just really rolling with something new. I mean, was it, was that what kinda sparked the discussion? Was a, an older special use permit that doesn't fit the neighborhood now versus?
Now, you raise a good point with the older ones, but my intent on this is from new permits issued from this point forward. And when you take a look at permits issued today and having a better record of them, you know, years within the future, as far as the rights that they have within the property. Because within the last six months, we've had two that have come up that people have asked us to certify whether these special use permits are still op, are still valid. One was from the nineteen seventies, one was one from the nineteen eighties on a property. Because we have no restrictions that were placed at that time, we, they're both operational. We had the, the city council reauthorize that. That's what really triggered the thought of, well, should we be doing something more here? Now, over the last sixteen years, we've, we've had a boilerplate condition on every permit that we've issued, that it's subject to a one-year sunset clause. If it's not used, it's invalid. So we, we have some of that on there. But with these new changes within the code that are being proposed, it would be within the code itself, so it's, it's more clear, it's, has the force of ordinance behind it. And the, the point that I'm trying to make here with doing this is to be able to ensure that the rights that are granted for the permit are recorded on the property, so people know. And that if there's a change in use in the property, that, that the uses provided within the permit would discontinue legally, and that they would have to come back for another special use permit if another one wants to come forward in the future. To avoid a situation where you may have a, a special use permit that was issued today in twenty years, after various uses or changes in the neighborhood, would come back, and we would review it, and there would not be any provisions in there that would allow the city to say, no, if the neighborhood has changed, this is no longer appropriate where twenty years ago it was.
Mr. Chair. So Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah.
All right. So even under this new revision, amendment ordinance, ordinance amendment, old permits are still valid?
Correct. It would still be valid, provided they're still being used. And then the, we have the provision in there that if there's a, there's a use lag of at least three years, they would become invalid at that point.
So there is a retro component to this?
Uh, not for permits issued before today. These would be for permits issued from this point forward. So there, there would be no retroactivity to anything existing before today.
So the old permits are still valid, which is my original question.
Right, right. They're still valid on that. And that was the discussion we had with the city attorney as to whether we could put the, put the provisions on this ordinance and have those retroactively applied to permits issued in the past. And his opinion on that is, it's not entirely clear. It's a gray area, and it would not be his recommendation to do so.
Okay, so then clearly this applies, three-year sunset, all these provisions apply only to new permits?
Correct.
Right. So if we go back to the flower shop, taking over the auto shop under the new permit, under the new provisions, the auto shop is now recorded on the property with the county. Is there a mechanism then to un-record and re-record? Or it, it would have to be unrecorded. So the property now is connected to an auto shop by memorializing with the code county. If our shop comes in, is there a responsibility then of the new operator to fix the recording?
Commissioner, I, I think what we'd done is with the condition we would place on the special use permit, it would provide that language in there, so that we wouldn't have, there wouldn't have to be this check that would occur on that one, so that the, a condition would be added to the special use permit similar, taken out of the code here that would state that.
Okay. So it'll auto-destruct?
Effectively, yes.
All right. All right.
So where is that defined then, John, as far as that process? I know we talked about it at the last meeting as well, so, cuz I don't see anything in the, in the ordinance here that addresses that. So where, where does that get captured? And maybe I'm just not seeing it in here, but.
Yeah, Commissioner, I don't know if, we don't have a lot of detail as to what exactly would be recorded. But we've had the mechanism in here that would provide for the recording of it. And as the special use, as a special use permit condition, we would cite this portion of the code itself to state that, that if it's discontinued for three years or longer, it, it's no longer valid. And if there's a discontinued due to a success of operation of a different use, it should be known void. So we'd, we'd copy, we'd add that language as a condition, so that that would be recorded on the permit.
Okay, and so that would be recorded with the county, so in new buyer, post-title work, they're gonna see that language, right?
Exactly, yep.
Title work, okay.
So that's nothing that needs to be modified in the order?
I don't think so. I think that's just a practice that we would do.
Mr. Chair, another question?
Yep.
John, I don't know how to answer this. So, uh, just for sake of an example, do we specify in code, let's say you have a drive-through coffee, do we have like a required stacking that's called out?
Yeah, as far as stacking goes, I mean, we don't have a specific number for that within the code. I mean, we have the site plan approval, which may indicate stacking distances within, within either a condition or within the report itself, but nothing within the zoning code, no.
Okay. So for example sake, so this would be my concern, you know, as developers, that, cuz we, we've seen it, you know, when you get into a crash, you know, where you have a coffee shop, you know, they close fifty stores across the state, they sit vacant for three years, they'd be under a special use permit, where you're dealing with subjective information based on, you know, the planning commission and city council in place, and things like stacking, where, you know, every city's different, some specify you have to have this, some don't, you know, and we, and I couldn't remember if we did or not, where, you know, you, you have a site plan, someone invests in it, it only allows for, you know, four cars of stacking at that time, you know, the, the commissions feel it's acceptable. You know, maybe during operation, that view changes, um, just from seeing it in operation, maybe it backs into parking. Uh, so now, if you're coming in, you know, second in line to buy it, now you're dealing with, okay, well, they had a special use permit, but we're dealing with a new group, we don't know for sure if you can get it in. It's, it's, it seems a bit concerning where you have something that's approved and infrastructure's built for it. You know, where it, it could go away.
I think the big difference on this one is, we're, we're talking only about special use permits. Now, it's, we do not have a special use permit requirement for drive-through windows here in, in the city. It's a, it's a permitted use. And so I don't know how much that. And so I don't know how much that would come into play, uh, to be effective. Uh, where other cities have a special use permit for a drive, drive-through window, so.
Oh, so that's not a conditional use?
No, not, not a conditional use here, it's, it's.
Oh, okay.
So it's a, it's a permitted use, so, you know, a, a situation like that, we would only be looking at those that are listed as special uses.
And John, you don't think we have to codify the, the non-retroactiveness of this either in, in here?
I don't think so at this point, Commissioner. It's a good question. Uh, I, I don't think we need to do that.
Okay.
So is the, the language you had in the boilerplate before about a one-year sunset is not legally binding?
I, I believe it would still, it'd be legally binding on those existing permits. It's just when you put it into the ordinance, it becomes more visible at that standpoint. Because when you put it as a condition, there may be a circumstance where you forget to put that condition on a permit. I, I'm not aware of any that have, that have gone forward, but that risk is there. Where what's in the ordinance, it doesn't matter if that condition was placed down there, the code would overrule that.
So in theory, the, the ones that are existing out there could actually sunset in a year, uh, rather than be one forever.
Right, yeah, the ones that are existing out there that have that one-year sunset clause would not be bound by the provisions here, correct? And that one-year sunset clause is, is just on the, on the operation of, and it's not on the, the continuous operation of that, it's, it's on the establishment of the operation. That's a key point there. It's not like if you have a, a gas, say you have a, a situation where something opens up, closes, two years later, reopens, it's the same thing again. That sunset clause provision would not invalidate the permit. It, it, what it says is that within one year, you have to establish it.
You have to get it set up.
Yeah, you have to get started. It doesn't say that there can't be cessations of it after it's started.
Okay. Thank you, that makes sense.
Commissioner Bars.
I guess one other comment here, Mr. Chair. I think, you know, there's pieces of this that I like. I like the recording against property. I mean, I run into stuff that's either buried in warranty deeds or not recorded, and it's tou- tough to dig up. So I like that aspect of it. I like that the one year's gone to three years, cause I felt one year was a pretty, a pretty tight window. Um, just given the timeline of, you know, things like development and real estate. Still have concern about the concept of it. You know, I look at it and go, we have things like a con plan that guide us to where uses are approved and what di- what districts, you know, allow special use permits. Um, I was more supportive in concept of this for the older permits that, you know, now we're seeing, you know, aren't maybe a, a viable or the best use of that. To go the other direction where, you know, we've gone through planning processes to, you know, and to really dictate where things can go, um, through the right approval processes. Feel a little concerned that we'd be creating an additional handcuff, you know, for other users to come back in and, you know, and maybe not be able to pull a special use permit that was, um, approved previously. I guess I just, I just wanted to share, I guess, my, more of my just feelings on, on that in general.
John, did you, have you seen other cities approach it this way, or?
Yeah, as far as the recording of permits, that's a pretty common practice, uh, that, that cities have it on there. As far as having, uh, the time limit on the permit itself, it varies as far as what cities do. I didn't see anyone with a three-year. I saw one-year being common, but wanted to balance the options of the property owner on that with, uh, with the visibility of a change to neighboring property owners. So that's where the three years came up from that.
Mr. Chair, we've got a question for you.
Mr. Seagull.
You know, I guess, um, the, not being able to see, you know, not, you know, I mean, you've always gotta keep in mind what's this time, this, what's the ones that existed prior, what's for future. It's like a, it's hard, I mean, you're gonna, for a long period of time, have to check both places to see where special per- special use permits are. You know what I mean? So that's kinda difficult to try to use as a, you know, gather information to determine if it's not within, and, you know, like looking at it ahead of time, trying to foresee. I guess more of a comment than anything, I, it helps for the future, but you don't have the past.
Do you want to make a motion?
Do you feel like making a motion there, Commissioner Alpa?
I do.
Well, let's hear it.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, the ordinance amendment, continued ordinance amendment, twenty eighteen dash nineteen on special use permits.
Great, Commissioner Alpa moves for approval. Do I hear a second?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm just not positive on, uh, protocol here if.
And I, I can offer a little, little explanation of protocol at this point, if that'd be appropriate. With a motion and second, you could do a couple of different things. One, motion's made, it dies for lack of a second, and then the motion disappears. Another option would be somebody can second it for discussion purposes only. It doesn't, doesn't, um, obligate anyone to vote for it, but it establishes a mechanism to continue the con- to continue the discussion of it. So that, those are a couple of options that are out there.
If I might clarify?
Sure.
With a second, we would go to vote?
We would, we would go to a vote eventually, yes, but not a, it wouldn't necessarily go immediately to a vote, but, but, uh, the discussion could continue on it, correct?
And the discussion can continue if it dies now?
And if it dies, it, yeah, what the motion the second would do would be to set it up that we would take a vote eventually. Uh, but discussion could continue on it. If the motion dies for lack of a second, the motion's dead, continue, discussion can continue.
And with a lack of a second, or if there is a lack of a second, the discussion continue, what is the fate of this revision? Can you bring it, you bring it back to us?
The options that would be available would be, uh, there could be some direction to staff on potential changes. There could be a motion to, uh, to, to not move forward on the ordinance amendment itself, to deny, I'm sure deny would be the right word, but we wouldn't move forward on an ordinance amendment, and that would end the discussion at, at that point. Or end the, not the discussion, but end the procedure of a potential amendment at that point. I, I, I take that back. It would be that recommendation. Would we take that recommendation to the city council, I believe? I'd have to check legally on that one. I don't know how that would work. I mean, if, since we're the, since we're the, the party that, uh, that instituted it, yeah, you make recommendations to it. So I would assume it would be a recommendation to the city council to not take any action to amend the code. And we would, we would take that action to the council. If they concurred with it, then it'd be dead at that point. I think that would be the appropriate way. Little confusing.
Nobody likes your motion.
Not the only one who likes the amendment. But me.
So I, I guess at this point.
I'm actually inclined to second it myself.
Okay.
But I am gonna second it based on, uh, that we have more discussion, which I was planning on doing anyway. So, uh, I will second the motion, but we're gonna have some more discussion before we vote on it.
Okay.
Um, and I, I guess I'll just start that discussion, cause I think it would be important. I think we should probably, maybe, just based on the conversation that we're having each way in a little bit, and just kinda say where we're at on this thing. For my sake, I, I, you know, I actually, I, I think this is a good thing. I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Bars. But, you know, I, I do like the idea of us being able to at certain points in time, and I think this gives us a couple of good points in time to be able to kinda say, well, you know, we, it doesn't seem appropriate that, uh, a special use permit that was issued in nineteen seventy is still valid on that property in that neighborhood forty-five years later. Uh, because the neighborhood's changed, right? We should have the opportunity to be able to review those at some point. And I think this gives us the ability, and it's, it's a good balanced ability, I think, um, that says, yes, we, we should have the opportunity to review those special use permits again, or they should have to reapply if, if they haven't been using it for a long period of time. So for my part, I, I like this change.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bars.
I think maybe something that I, I could find myself supportive of, if we modify this a little bit where a special use permit can run with the property for the three years, even after a use change. So it's just not an immediate null and void, um, where, okay, it sits vacant, three years gone, get that. However, you know, getting under the circumstance, just again, just because I've seen it, you know, I've, I've seen a quick service restaurant be a quick serve, and then they closed down shop, and then it became an Oriental grocery store for a year, and they didn't make it. And then you had another group that came back in saying, and this is a little unrelated, cause this is about whack and sack credit. Um, but they said, okay, we had a, you know, Wendy's here, we're gonna go back to, you know, another quick serve, let's go. And then they, they can't, and then they can't get the approval. Um, and it was in a really limited window. So I think that, you know, if there, if the commission would consider this three-year window staying with the special use permit regardless of a change after the fact, and at least you have some runway with it, I think I'd be, I'd be more comfortable with something like that.
John, was there, is there background on why we added that last sentence?
Yeah, you know, it's a situation, I don't know how often it's going to come up on that one, on, in that circumstance. But it's more that, uh, when you, when you see a change in the use of the property, uh, that to have that property go back to a, a former use might not have been anticipated by the neighborhood. If someone buys a house in the neighborhood, they see, they, they come in, they, they see it as some sort of retail establishment, and then it goes back to repair garage, like, wait a second, I, I didn't know that was there. But I think the situations of it coming up are, are not gonna happen that often. And I would be, be fine with just striking that last sentence in red there where it starts in addition, and just, and just leave it there in number two where it's, where it says, uh, three years or longer, the permit should be null and void, and just skip that part of it.
Well, that could actually happen within the three-year period too.
Could.
Buy a house and there's nothing there, and.
It could, yeah.
They start operation on something that was.
Yeah, that's true too.
Do I hear a friendly amendment there? I don't know if it's friendly.
Protocol again, is that?
Sure, sure, you could offer, if, uh, you, you can offer an amendment, uh, if it's acceptable to the motion, to the maker of the motion, and to the person that seconded to, uh, to any change, if you wanna do that.
Okay, so I would pro- uh, propose that amendment to strike the last sentence, beginning with an addition, to strike the successive operation of a different use.
All right, Commissioner Alpa, you consider that a friendly amendment?
Let me ask a question first. Um, if you had, let's go back to the, uh, this service garage. Uh, it was in a neighborhood where it had a number of garages there. They closed down, flower shop moves in. Say the flower shop needed a special permit as well. If you, if it didn't, uh, null and void that out where they had to go get their own, now you have a, potentially, an, an operation in there that this doesn't fit, and you've got no recourse, uh, to even say, no, you can't operate in this particular situation or this particular location. That's my concern, is you, you don't have any control over what moves in under that special use permit.
And Commissioner, the special use permit itself would be pretty specific to a, to a specific type of use, like a repair garage, for example. Uh, and so if, if it was another identified special use, I'm trying to think of what else that would be. Uh, is it car wash one? Car wash, that would be another one. Uh, one thing that's, is a little bit unique about our code, uh, compared to many other zoning codes, we're pretty general in our uses, and we don't have a lot of specified, a lot of specific special uses that many other communities do, where, uh, you've got a multitude of things that are conditional use permits. We have some, but not, not too many.
Okay, I'll accept the, the change.
All right, or help me out here, John, we have to vote on the amendment first, right?
Right, right.
Okay, so is there any discussion, further discussion about the amendment?
And actually, to the point of clarification there, as long as the motion, maker of the motion and the second of the motion are acceptable to the change, then that motion would then go before the entire planning commission for a vote.
Awesome, so we don't have to take two votes?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm good with it too. Uh, one clarifying question, I guess, John, to follow up on what you were just talking about, though, the, when we write the special use permits, right, I mean, it, I, I thought you said somewhere in there that there were, were real general about them, but we're, we actually do specify, like, this is for an auto repair place. It doesn't say you get access to all the special uses specified in the code.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
That'd be dangerous.
All right, is there any further discussion then on the amended amendment that we're proposing?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think I agree with, it seems slightly redundant. But anyway, I, I like the, the amendment. I'm, I'm gonna go back to, uh, the age-old special permit situations. Is there, I, I guess, how important is it, do you feel, John, that those are floating out there in these situations where they may have been abandoned for how long? Forty-five years, right, we're talking about? How important is it to the city to have those dissolved? Would there be a mechanism? Do we have to call them out and have a public hearing? Or how could, is there, is there really a way that we can clean the table?
Sure. On permits that have been issued in the past, the ability for us as the city to go back and to void those or limit those permits, our ability to do that is questionable. our ability to do that is questionable. I think that when talking to the city attorney, it's not clear that we have the power to do that. And so I don't, I would not suggest that we would wholesale go through and do that. I don't feel we have the power to do that, plus, you know, it doesn't seem to have come up as an issue.
Correct.
So I guess that would be what I would say.
And we would have other ways to deal with a situation where the user of a special use permit was a nuisance to the neighborhood or something like that.
We do, yeah. I mean, there's other nuisance ordinances that are out there, exactly.
So currently, you're saying that this has just never been an issue, you don't, this is unimportant, that we get rid of these old possibly existing permits?
In those circumstances, I just don't know if we have the power to do that. And I, it would, in hindsight, it would be nice to, but I just don't think that we do in the, and I guess I'm looking at it from the time that would be involved to do something that may be questionable on something that has not been an issue. I don't know if I want to go there.
Understood.
All right. Any other comments or questions before we call the vote here? All right, so just to clarify, we are voting on the amended amendment. So in the ordinance that John has here down in the red, item number two has been changed to have in addition that last sentence struck. So it simply reads, in any case where a use authorized by a special use permit is discontinued for a period of three years or longer, the permit shall be null and void. All right. So all those in favor of approving the amendment as amendment, amended, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
And this will move forward for a first reading to the city council June 18th with the public hearing and second reading occurring on July 9th.
All right, thank you.
All right.
All right, last item on the agenda is rescheduling of July planning commissioner meetings.
Yes, because of the, you have five Mondays in July and the first week being the 4th of July, Independence Holiday, the city council will meet on the 2nd and 4th Mondays in July, and the planning commission will meet on the 3rd and 5th. So our next, well, our July meeting will be July 16th and July 30th on that one. So no action needed on that one, just more of a clarification on that as we move forward with our meetings.
All right. And is there any other business?
An other business? You may notice that we're down a couple of planning commissioners right now with Mr. Wallace's resignation, and then Mike Harvey's resignation a couple of weeks ago. Mike has taken a position that'll require him to move out of town, and so he had to resign the position there. So we did interview five candidates for the two open spots and made recommendations to the city council. Those recommendations are gonna be moving forward at the next meeting on June 18th. But the recommendation would be for Emily Best and Ian Martin to serve on the planning commission. If the council concurs, Emily would be seated on June 25th at the next planning commission meeting we have here. Ian would be about a month later. He has some prior commitments on Monday nights, and then he would join us July 30th for his first meeting. And so we hope that'll move forward with action by the commission, by the council on Monday night. And then looking at our meeting agenda here, we've got our next meeting scheduled for June 25th. And at that meeting, I think we're gonna be looking at reviewing, a review of the comprehensive plan. Is that correct, Justin? So that'll be the bulk of what we're gonna be doing on June 25th, and that is all I have.
All right. Great. Any other news or items from the commissioners? All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.